We're gonna call the meeting to order if you'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
All right. All right, vote.
Yep.
There, Gary.
Here.
Tom Hilber. Lynn Polly.
Here.
Norm Foley.
Here.
Now, we don't need. Michelle.
Here. Okay, before we get to the adoption of the agenda, I would like to make an amendment to the line item for correspondence to amend and add the email responding to Rick Duel's findings from Julie Miller? Okay, I'm just making sure I'm, I'm just making sure I remember it because I don't have it in front of me. I'm sorry, Julie. Yes, so we will add that under correspondence, letter B, an email from Julie Miller. Any other changes to the agenda? Carrying none, we'll move forward. Oh, can I make a motion to receive and file Rick Duel's report as well as Julie's email under correspondence?
I'll support.
I need a motion.
Oh, well. I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
There's motion for your support. Thank you. I can't make motions today, guys. Hey, did everyone have a chance to review? Oh, I'm sorry, I did miss one step here. The public meeting participation rules. Number one, please wait for the chair to acknowledge you before you speak. Number two, begin by stating your name and your address, please. Number three, give us your comments, opinions, or questions on the issue being discussed. Number four, to ensure that everyone has time to speak and that we can address other items on the agenda, we may limit an individual's speaking time to five minutes. If time permits, we may allow you one additional time period to provide new information. And number five, please be respectable respectful of the planning commission applicant and your neighbors. Thank you for attending today's meeting. Michelle Woodruff, I share. Okay, did everyone get a chance to review the minutes from them? Special meeting held on November 1st. A motion by Norm, support by Dylan to approve the minutes from November 1st. Is it a voice vote? Are those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. At this time, we'd like to entertain public comment on any items other than the cases to be heard.
Everybody in attendance is for the case.
Great, thank you. Okay. So. Correspondence, the first correspondent is report number 11-22, and the second is number 12-22 from Rick Duel, and those are the special use reports. Should I read through them both?
No.
Okay.
We received and filed, that keeps it.
Great, great. And then also, as far as the other item of correspondence, did everyone get a chance to review Julie's email on top of that? Okay, great, thank you. So let me open it up for the public hearing, correct? By motion? I, someone make a motion to open up a public hearing.
I'll support.
Thank you. A motion by Larry, support by Corey to open up the public hearing. By voice vote, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carrying? Okay, discussion on the first case. That is case number P-11-22. Kim Stafford requests a special approval use for a vertical expansion of an existing non-conformity. The property is located at 8672 Gutshus Road, parcel number 018145000075-00 in a waterfront residential zone district. Nathan?
Oh, yes, I'd like to, Nathan Skibby, zoning administrator as well. In this instance, we have Mr. Leturno, who's representing the property owner. This is actually another successful educational stance of having Long Lake residents follow proper protocol to improve their existing non-conformities. In this instance, we've already seen, I believe, two or three cases very similar. The footprint of the existing structure has not and will not change. They are going up in vertical height. Both building official Polly and I have done a site visit. Some recommendations have been given. But the case before you is pretty much just that, the the vertical expansion, which meets the criteria for special use. If there's any questions, but if either Mr. Leturno, Kevin Polly, and myself can answer while we have us. Pretty straightforward. It's just the reality. It's it's it checks and balances for how to circumnavigate or mitigate a continuation of the existing non-conformities. As we all know, just about everything on Long Lake is an existing non-conformity due to whether it be subdivisions over building over easements too close to the property lines and setbacks, et cetera, et cetera. That's why we were as stringent as we were with special use of expansion of a non- conformities, non-conformities. So this is another successful case being brought before the the planning commission. Basically disallowing them by our current structures to improve their position, but not expand their position other than vertically. The the topography will not change. I want to mention that as well because runoff can also be a potential issue. The foundation is a newer foundation. So the block course will not be increased. So water diversion is not an issue which we've had some concerns with with other special uses of vertical expansion. This will be from basically an internal modification and second floor expansion, so. With that being said, you have three individuals that could represent, but pretty, this one's pretty straightforward.
This is the chair personally, though. Tell my, yes. Well, and as you see, driving that, you take that macaroni, there's probably 11 cottages on what would be in today's standards, two blocks.
Yeah. They're only about six inches apart.
Yeah. So that was one. Obviously, it's an existing non-conformity. That was a concern, both building official Polly and myself conducted after the resident submitted his paperwork, conducted the site visit and actually measured the, I believe, the community north side of the structure. Doesn't meet criteria for the sidebar setback and for the current situation. And the recommendation was given to the owner of fire wall protection. So I think that's how I do it. I see it's a tank, is that appropriate?
Does that field just for that cottage, or is it a multiple? It takes up a paramount of room.
One mound, you're two fields.
Okay, okay.
That was done not long ago.
Okay.
Because of the restrictions, they had to get the neighbors.
Get a variance and all.
Yeah, the two fields are, they're about 10 foot apart.
Okay. That looked pretty good size, I thought. Maybe there's two or three hooked in.
And that was also one thing that we hammered down was the capacity of that field. There aren't gonna be, it's not gonna have an expansion of residential use and and capacity. So I believe within the back, you have a letter stating that capacity is within its abilities by DHD board.
Yeah, it'll still handle the expansion.
Yeah.
Obviously.
The the living quarters in terms of side related, how DHD board make that calculation.
Right.
Capacity.
That's what that letter had stated.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Me?
Anyone? Just cut my eye. If there's no other discussion, is there a motion?
A motion to be closed the public hearing and then.
Thanks. Never gonna forget how to do this late, guys. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion. Support.
Thank you.
Now, just be a.
A voice vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, public hearing, or yeah, public comment on that hearing is, on that case is closed.
I make a motion to approve the special land use for the vertical expansion of an existing non-conformity located at 8672 Gutshus Road on parcel number 01814500007500 based on the findings and facts contained in report 11-22.
I'll support that.
Motion, good job. Motion by Dylan's, word by Corey. Roll call.
So, Corey?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
And Lynn?
Yes.
And Norm?
Yes.
And Michelle?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Dylan's a project. Are you gonna be signing as a representative of the owner? Yeah, there is a copy. So you and the vice chair will sign.
Um.
This is the advocate's cabinet.
So the only sign that's like a plan, damn, same thing, damn. Yeah.
Yeah. Just anywhere. Anywhere. And then that is you, was yours?
You got it.
Do I have to sign that? Ah. Then you've got my autograph and do with it what you choose.
Don't sell it on either.
You're gonna.
Oh, man.
Like at school.
There you go. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg.
I don't.
Okay, so, oh, sorry, that one's done. Um, now, can I have a motion to open the public hearing on case number P-12-22?
I'll make that. I'll support.
Motion by Norman, supported by Larry to open the public hearing for case number P-12-22 for Skid Row Enterprises LLC, who requests special approval use for outdoor boat and RV storage. The property is located at 3417 Gilbert Drive, and the parcel numbers are in a general business B-2 zone district. Any? This is a voice vote? On the public here, no, we already did that one, to open the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, the 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 public hearing is now open.
Wonderful. In regards to case P-12-22, Ms. Miller is here. I forwarded on Ms. Miller's email to this commission and all its members in response to Rick Duel's facts of finding, or findings of fact, shall I say? And so in her email, she discusses what were found to be deficiencies in Mr. Duel's report, i.e. fencing, lighting, and service type, I believe, were the only considerations. She addresses them in the email. That being as a stipulation in ordinance 142, any business or commercial activity that abuts residential have to have screening. And so that, I believe, has already been addressed. This is somewhat seemingly chaotic with three different parcel numbers. We had to advertise that way because Ms. Miller is also in the process with Allenburg of consolidating said properties. So this covers every legal gambit. That being said, outdoor storage is a special use. So as construction continues on the storage units and that development, this is an ancillary sidebar that she wanted to move forward with and concurrent to the construction of her internal storage. That being said, it's then again, another pretty straightforward case. I believe that the vegetation, the screening has been addressed. I'll leave lighting to her, but I believe all of what were considered deficiencies in Mr. Duel's report have been addressed. So with that being said, if Ms. Miller has anything to add to that.
The floor is hers, Julie.
I'm happy to answer any question. Yeah, we bought the property. There's, what is it, around three acres there. The fourth lot is not being combined. We're just leaving that as it is for now, and we're we're only just a little bit into the third lot. So there's a whole bunch of woods there as you're going down Gilbert. That will, you know, I I want to be a good neighbor, and I want to make it look nice, of course, because, you know, I want customers. So I want to do what I need to do to be a good neighbor, but I also don't want to do things that are, you know, unnecessary expenses. So.
Dress up the storage. Yeah, I get it. Does anyone have any questions regarding the findings and then the results from the?
So do we require that on the US 23 side that there should be some screening there, and you're asking for us to not make that requirement?
Well, it's apparently the property across 23 is residential. So that would technically be abutting a residential district. I don't think there's anything over there now. I think it's just woods. But my my request to not have to do that is based on the fact that it is such a distance. I think it's, I think there's something. An ordinance that says that it's like 200 feet from that residential district, and you don't have to have the fence. And while I'm not 200 feet from the district, any building that they would put on their property based on setbacks, et cetera, et cetera, would be more than 200 feet away from my building. So I I I think that there's a substantial amount of distance there. And I mean, it's, they're gonna see that it's commercial. There's gonna be a sign. There's gonna, you know, I, it's not. I I think a fence would be more of a detractor from the appearance than to just let it be natural with, I mean, there's there's quite a bit of vegetation there at the 23 side of the property, which provides a natural screen, and I think that that would. Yeah.
Just want, when you wrote it in your, your email, just wanted to cover that.
Thank you.
And to strengthen that, naturally growing vegetations can be considered fencing.
Okay.
Berth, so it's, she, she, Ms. Miller is is right at that point in time by MDOT standards, it is a hundred foot wide and right away. So in this instance, I believe we had a erosion control have some questions about wetlands, and that is not even within the, and it's it's a natural border. It's natural vegetation. Really, it would be the the property owner at that point in time for more of a security purpose. So we've had that conversation, but.
Yeah, and and as far as security goes, you know, if somebody wants to get in there and get into some mischief, they're gonna jump a fence. I think it's actually better that they, you know, have to go through a deep ditch and swampy stuff and cattails and trees, and the same thing with the the woods that I've left on the other two sides. I mean, that's very thick, you know, lots of branches and uneven ground. I think it'd be a lot harder if you wanted to steal something to try to navigate through that as opposed to, you know, me putting in a $40,000 fence that they can just jump over.
And and the other, the other thing I wondered is, it's, I anticipate a light pole at the east end. Is that, is that up to you as the developer? Is that up to MDOT as? Or whomever, I guess.
The it depends, because how far, if I'm gonna be able to have the outdoor storage there at the east end, then I would put a light.
Put a light, okay, okay.
I'm not gonna be.
I didn't know if that was something that was gonna be up to you, or if that was like a standard municipal.
No, that would be more of a security.
Okay.
Consideration on.
Curious. Great. Any other questions? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
I'll support.
Thank you, Julie. Motion by Larry, okay. Motion by Larry, support by Dylan to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Okay. Any motion to approve or deny?
I make a motion to approve the special land use for construction of an outdoor RV boat storage facility located at 3417 Gilbert Drive, Alpena, on parcel number 01823000007500, 01823000007600, and 01823000007700 based on the findings and fact contained in report 12-22, and additional information provided at the public hearing.
And I will support that.
Okay, moved by Dylan, supported by Corey. This is roll call. Okay.
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Yes.
Norm?
Yes.
And Michelle?
Yes. Great, thank you, Julie. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing commerce. I don't, we don't need to sign anything or do anything with that? Okay, well, I'm good with that, too. Thanks, Julie. Have a great night. Okay, now on to discussion. Denise, are you there?
I am.
Hi, how are you?
Good. How are you guys?
Good.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah, uh, yes. Okay.
Nathan just took off running. I don't know what he's doing.
He's pinning you on the Zoom.
Oh, no, okay. That sounds painful.
There we are. Okay, Denise, you've got a zoning ordinance amendment.
Yeah, so I thought I better show up because Nathan asked me to write a couple of amendments pertaining to a couple of very small, specific things, and of course, then what he got was 17 pages of stuff that I found that needed to be changed. So I thought maybe it would be a good, a good idea for me to show up and just kind of go over it with you guys. This isn't the public hearing or anything, so this is just, uh, you know, talk, right? This is just to review it. You can see what what I'm bringing to you, and then at this meeting, then you can set a public hearing to go through the adoption process. So does that sound okay?
Sounds great.
Okay. Um. So the document, I don't, I think you're looking probably at color copy of the the amending ordinance that I sent. It should say ordinance blank of 22 at the top, and that's got some blue and some red and some black text in it. So I'm just gonna kind of go through it, take you through it section by section to explain what's going on here. So what I typically do, and then I'll go to the ones that Nathan actually asked me to write.
Great.
So, so what, uh, there's things that come up, you know, you you know, your ordinance is always gonna have to be changed as new things come along or things change in the court, so that I'm trying to keep you guys as up to date as possible. The first one there on page one is a new definition for aggrieved person, or well, you know, we could actually use the the term. I would probably actually change it to aggrieved party. So because of a court case, and a lot of times, you know, we have to make changes in our ordinances because of court cases that have been decided. So there was a court case in the Michigan Supreme Court where they actually changed the definition of an aggrieved party. And so we're just gonna change it in your ordinance, all right? It was, it used to be that simple definition. That's not true anymore. So the aggrieved party now, we have three criteria to be an aggrieved party. So like, if you're gonna take something to the ZBA, or you're gonna take something to court, you've got to be, you know, you've got to be somehow be an aggrieved party. So one of the criteria that they added was that you have to have participated in some proceedings. So let's say, let's say there's a case that comes along and, you know, it's controversial, and you have people in the audience that stand up and speak out, you know, in favor of and against that case. So planning commission makes a decision. Then if somebody in the audience disagrees with that, even if it, they're not the one, they weren't the applicant, they're just someone else in the audience. So as long as they've participated in like the challenge, you know, in in the proceedings, they've stood up and they've said, hey, this is what I think. Then they've added that, that's, that's what they need to have done, somehow participated to be an aggrieved party, to take that, to take that to the ZBA or to take that to court. So um, this is their specific language, so we're just gonna make that change.
Denise, is that they have to have all three or one of the three?
All three.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Um, and then the next one down is, there's some, just some definitions that have changed in state law. So this is the Childcare Organizations Act. We, we just repeat the the definition of family childcare home and group childcare home in the the zoning ordinance. So recently, they made a change to in the in the Childcare Organizations Act to those two definitions. So basically, just to kind of summarize, for a family childcare home, they added something called increased capacity. So after they've been licensed for a family childcare home for a certain amount of time, they can have one additional child after, you know, that period of time has, so they can, they can apply for this increased capacity. And then the same goes for group childcare homes, and after a certain amount of time of being licensed and open, they can add two children. Okay, so the reason I want to make this change is because in our ordinance, you know, we said family childcare home goes up to six, group childcare home is seven to 12 kids. And that's not necessarily the case anymore. So, um, you know, we need to make that little bit of change. There was also some definition added about what is babysitting services versus child versus childcare in the family childcare home category. So I added that, it so it clarifies it. So this just is right out of the law, right out of law. So the thing you'll have to remember is it makes a little bit confusing because in your, you know, normally you think, oh, well, okay, a family childcare home is going up to seven. Now they're having an, in their increased capacity to seven. That doesn't kick them up into the category of a group childcare home. So just because family childcare home is a permitted use, group childcare home is a special use. So you don't suddenly have to have a special use hearing because they're going up in increased capacity because they're still falling under the definition of in state law of a family childcare home. It's just a family childcare home with increased capacity. So we need to change those definitions. And then later on in this amendment, what I did is in all of your district tables where it says what uses are allowed in what district, I want to take that where we wrote, you know, less than six and seven to 12 next to where it says family childcare home and daycare home. I want to take those numbers out because I think it just makes it confusing because the number, we're just gonna leave the number in the definition. And then the other thing that I did is I provided a statement that basically says if Public Act 116 of 1973, which is the Childcare Organizations Act, if that, if the definitions change again, we automatically, it automatically, you, we reference them, it automatically changes in your ordinance. I mean, we'll go in and make the change, but we want it to automatically go into effect if the state law changes. That way, there's no lag between when they change and when we can get around to changing it in your ordinance. Moving on, I'm on page two now. Um, so I I beefed up your solar definitions and your solar section. You had some standards already. I've been dealing about the past year with a lot of different communities that are getting solar facilities, and it's been quite a ride. So I spent all summer doing some training. Well, no, I spent all summer receiving training on solar and wind facilities both. We had like 10 different training sessions that I attended to learn all about this issue. In one case, one day, we actually went to, our class actually went to a solar facility and spent about a half a day there. And then we also went to a wind facility and spent the other half of the day there. So we got to see in person, you know, exactly how it works and 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 what some of the issues were. So as a result of that, and because I'm getting a lot of requests right now for some good standards. Um, some good standards, especially for solar, not so much wind, even though it's still, wind is still out there, it's still happening, but mostly it's solar. Lots and lots of pressures happening right now around our region to, um. To rural communities that have, have a lot of agricultural land, okay? Um. It's kind of big and, and it's coming. Okay, so if you guys haven't been approached yet, you will be. Because you guys are on, I have a map up. Um, I'm gonna send it to you guys. We're actually gonna be doing some solar training in January that we're gonna invite everybody to. About, I think it's January eleventh. Um, it's gonna be free. Anybody who wants to attend, uh, dinner's included. So. When I send that, you know, we want to get it, it's gonna be, it's gonna be in Gaylord. We had to credit, try to find a location that was.
I think we're all RSVPing right now.
Okay. So. Um, yeah, dinner's included. This is great. So it was, uh, uh, State of Michigan and University of Michigan are, you know, graciously putting on this training. Um, free for everybody. So. But anyway, some of the issues that we're seeing is, you know, solar is a. Is a, it has a very large land use impact, okay? And. That's one of the reasons we want to make sure that. You're prepared with some standards. As I got to looking at everybody's standards, I'm thinking, you know, you guys' standards are not adequate. To what I saw happening at the solar facility that I visited. So the one I visited was in, um, Chiauasi County. And it was, I think, the scale of it was eighteen hundred acres of solar panels. So that's a lot in one location. Um. Those are the size of facilities that are being planned all over the state of Michigan. So they're very, very large. Um, I think much larger than most people ever. You know, realize they would be. So. The one that I visited had terrible, terrible screening. Um, so I wanted to beef up your screening section because. The screening was pretty much non-existent at this facility. It completely changed the landscape. It's actually stands over two townships. It. Completely changed the landscape. Um, they had screen requirements in the ordinance, but they weren't very good. And when I was, we were touring the facility, we, we drove all the way around it and we were in it, you know, we talked with the power company and everything, but. It was pretty much all very short, like five foot and dead. Okay, the screening was dead. It wasn't screening anything. So that's not okay. So I wanted to make sure we added some language. In, in your, in everybody's ordinances to address these type of things. So. First thing is we need some better definitions in terms of. Well, accessory solar panels. So you have an accessory solar panel section. I believe, but, um. Yeah, so I just added some things to it, but in terms of defining a building mounted, ground mounted, building integrated means it's built right into the, you know, the building materials. Okay, so it's in the roof panels, it's in the siding. Um, we needed to define maximum tilt, minimum tilt, because how we're measuring setbacks depends on the tilt of the solar panel. So I added a couple of definitions there. Um, non-participating lot and participating lot, because we say our setbacks, you know, setbacks are from the lot line. Well. When they do a solar facility, they're putting together multiple, you know, hundreds and hundreds of parcels they're putting together. To make this facility. So you don't want to say from the lot line because. You want it to be from the outer lot line, from the lot line of any lot that's not participating in the facility. So that's why we need those definitions. And then. Repowering means that they're gonna go in, they're gonna replace panels, they're gonna increase the power rating of the facility within its. Existing footprint. So we need to have a way to address that, you know, is that a new special use? Is it not? So we had to define that. And then, um. I'm just, let me just cover the last definition, then we'll go on to the actual regulations section. But. The other thing is that you don't have addressed the ground mounted wireless facilities. So, you know, we, we're very prepared for wireless towers. But, um, if anybody's seen that. Wireless facility in Hillman. Has anybody not seen the, the new facility in Hillman?
I have not.
Okay, I'll show you, you, I'll show you what it looks, am I able to share my screen?
Yeah, you can.
Okay, I'm gonna. Yeah.
Wine and dine with the microphone on my way. Uh, I wanted to make mention and grab the, the, the mic Denise, because we actually do, for the first time, have an individual that's, uh, presented a potential solar farm. Uh, fifteen, uh, kilowatt, I mean, fairly large, larger than, but. His proposal is in a waterfront residential abutting district on North Point. So I just wanted to kind of bring that to everybody's attention. Uh, share screen, so.
Yeah, it says disabled share screen.
You're gonna have to go up to. Her, where are we at? You gotta, I think you gotta remove her pin. And then on her three dead, three buttons, you can say.
Yeah.
Make her to make host.
Make host and then she can share, share her screen.
She can just make it the host. She can rock it.
Yeah.
Enjoy, enjoy that power, Denise.
Hang on, I'm still waiting for a. A notice to come up.
Just make it change host.
Yep, there you go. Now she can share her screen.
You can go home. Yeah.
Do you want some motions and you give me a way to get out?
She's doing everything you might as well. All right, so are you seeing a picture of some giant doorknobs?
Yeah.
All right, so that's the, uh, that's what the facility in Hillman looks like. So that's a ground mounted wireless facility. And we want to make sure that. We cover this in your ordinance, because the one in Hillman was. Really, because no one knew, you know, we, we're all covered for towers, right? I mean, that's what we, that's what we planned for. That's what we zone for is. Is cell towers. And until these things came along, we didn't know, wow, you know, these things can be sitting right on the ground. They don't need a support structure. And so technically, they got classified because there was no other way to do it as wireless equipment. Well, no, that's more than wireless equipment, but that's what the ordinance. That's where they fell in the ordinance. So there was no site plan review or anything that went into that facility. So we need to make sure that that's covered. So I added a definition in your ordinance for, or in this draft. For ground mounted wireless facility. They're also called earth stations or ground stations. Uh, the one in Hillman was. Was SpaceX. So. Uh, excuse me, I'm. Losing my voice already. Haven't even been talking that much. Um. So anyway, so that facility, we're gonna make sure to add to your definition. So.
Great.
I'm gonna keep going. I'm gonna get back to solar. It's a little bit farther down this, in these pages, but. I don't know, Nathan, do you want to do the next one? This is the chicken, ducks and geese, or do you want me to do this?
No one should be.
So I don't know what, uh, the Chinese calendar is, but in the Charter Township of Alpena, it's the year of the rooster. That being said. Uh, it's come to, and, and that's the thing about zoning ordinances, he, as you don't know where you can strengthen or what your weaknesses are until you've really had the cases come before you. Uh, the season has been, I think, twenty-seven different site reviews of non-conforming, uh, chickens, roosters, ducks. Um, and really. One thing, we, we kind of try to curb it and keep it very restrictive. Um. But I think. Moving forward as a zoning administrator, affording me, because one, nobody wants any waterfall without. Special use in an R one or waterfront residential. Uh, I wholeheartedly agree with that, but when we have in our township. Such a large disparity of lot sizes, but in our two and our three districts. That afford, because we do have good standards in terms of housing and on how these birds have to be kept. But in an R two and R three, um, we can keep that, that standard for construction and, and living conditions, but afford me the ability. Instead of bringing every chicken to the planning commission. Um, afford some flexibility. And so really, that's what it came down to is, one, I never want another rooster. In the Charter Township of Alpena. But I also have come across some cases where I've told people that can't have birds. That are bordering the opportunity to actually challenge it as a gamp site. Um, because they have the land mass or they have no near neighbor. So this, it's affording to some more latitude. Uh, it's not abandoning, uh, chicken, ducks and geese. I know some people are definitely, uh, against all birds and I, I'm not that far away because I love to shoot them myself. But, uh, there's, there's a lot of opportunity and I think we're, we're driving, it's a little too restrictive. When it gets into an R two and an R three. Because once you get away from our one and right waterfront residential. You, you have the entire gambit out, out there. And so that's really the, the emphasis here is. Affording, uh, the zoning administrator, uh, some flexibility and not overburdening, um, the planning commission. Or really, because now we've increased our fees for special use for residential's six hundred dollars. And so people are trying to get into chickens usually as a cost savings mechanism. And because they probably saw on some harm, home and garden show and, you know, God bless, free range eggs. Um, but that being said, but it just, it made sense after, especially after this year of twenty-seven different cases of birds is. Not one size fits all. And, and R two and R three, as long as we keep those standards. Affording the zoning administrator some flexibility. Um, would actually help me immensely.
What about turkeys?
The president gets to save one a year. Um, outside of that, we've never defined turkeys, uh, in this.
Um, I have a neighbor that has. Free rein. Come over to Larry's house and. Walk around and eat whatever.
Pull a tag.
No, because they're. They're, they're brown and white.
Oh, well, I guess, I, then I guess I've never. Thus far, I haven't received a complaint about turkeys.
Has a rooster too.
Hmm.
Well.
Not after tonight. Twenty-five.
Yeah.
I'm surprised nobody has said anything. He, he doesn't bother me. It's across the street.
Yeah, no.
But the turkeys come over quite.
And I guess I, I.
To things.
Volley, volley that back to Denise, because it's rare, but I suppose people. Can raise.
They've got a little bit of everything over there.
Yeah. Is that something we should add to this section?
I would love to add another bird into the.
Can you just generalize it with?
Birds or fowls?
Well, you can't say domestic birds, but another thing, if we're gonna be very site specific, uh, I know in other municipalities that there are people that actually raise Guinea fowl.
Yeah.
Um, and so that would be, if we're gonna dot I's and cross T's, then.
Yeah.
These are the, the meetings to really populate that list.
About pigeons. I have one in my backyard for a couple days. I don't wait.
I said, I tied my note to its leg.
Yeah. It was Julie's email.
Yeah, so pheasants, but pheasants in, in, and that's a good point, but pheasants, uh, typically. Because there's atypical scenarios, uh, pheasants in this area are on game preserves.
Yeah, you can, when they have their bird sales.
Mm-hmm.
And you can't say domestic birds because that would include parakeets and cockatoos and.
Yeah.
All these people who own stupid birds and live in their house.
But they'll fly away.
Want their houses to be foreclosed.
They'll have little leeches on them. Take.
Yeah, I could do that.
More power to.
But no, that's, that's really it. So that's what's good about these discussions. It's okay. I mean, let's add turkeys to it. Um, the premise is no matter what the list is in terms of poultry and fowl. Is affording some latitude when you get away from an R one in a waterfront residential. Um. Primarily, a lot of the, the instances that I had to address, uh, the season were all in either R one or waterfront residential.
Really?
And it was simply, I watch your show and I can. Grow chickens and they'll give me free eggs. It's all nonsense. Um. Because people aren't educated and done. It, it's, it is complex for a lot of people. Um, but R two and R three, to have that latitude instead of pushing everything here. Cause I told a lot of people, um. You get a Philly rooster, first crows, the first to go. Is, or you gotta find a home for it. And. Those are silly conversations that I have to have with people. Can you find a good home for your rooster? Um, but in R two and R three. There's some variability. And so this didn't define it in a narrow box. It's, it's not. Helpful. So Guinea fowl, turkeys. The Chinese ring that, keeping it with the year of the rooster, monkey.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, I mean, this, this, this is, these are the conversations that Denise needs to carry, because.
I think, yes.
Yeah, I think we have to be specific.
I raised turkeys downstate on three quarters of Nater, and I'm just a common judge and, uh. We had a pair of two that became pets. And the next year we had six, I'm sorry, nine. Third year. Finally, everybody raised sixteen. And. It, it was just fun for the children who were not getting, the neighbors all liked them. Uh, so they stayed in their yard. They were kind of out of their business in here. And, uh. Probably as far as the savings, probably there were maybe ten, fifteen dollars a pound was all dressed and all set and over, but, but they were eating. Mm-hmm. But it wasn't right in, like, anything local.
Yeah. Really, the biggest, the biggest impediment I'm not even worried about, it, it is always the booster.
Mm-hmm.
It, I mean. That's ninety-nine percent of. The catch case that I have to deal with.
And you're saying the rooster would be prohibited in all?
Roosters are always, outside of, in any residential category, roosters are, the only way roosters are allowed in this township are on agricultural based land. And I believe, I don't even know if we have it defined in Forest Breck. But eggs allowable. Outside of that.
Makes sense.
That's where zoning can be farming this, I don't, and that's where those activities are supposed to take place. Unfortunately, we live in an inverse. Uh, sprawl scenario in terms of agricultural, we're feeding back into residential neighborhoods. This costs.
Yeah. Well.
So, okay, so we're gonna leave the standards as is. I'm going to. Add turkey. So we're gonna try to be a little more inclusive for the fowl that we. Allow and then. Changing it to permitted use in our two and our three and still leaving it as a special land use in our one and. Waterfront residential. So that's the summary. Is there, do, do we want any more changes besides what we've already talked about?
I don't have a need for, I mean, I, I have several ideas, but it's not inclusive.
All right, I'm gonna keep going then down this page. So at the bottom of page three, we have, um, this is where in each of our district sections. I, I put, you know, letter B under the, it, this is in our tables of uses under human care and social assistance. We're removing those numbers from family and group childcare. Just keeping them in the definition. I just want them out of those tables. So if they change again, we don't have to change every table again.
Great.
Um, so that's just repeated down through all those districts. And so the other one, and Nathan, you probably want to talk about this one too, is the building height issue. So I'll let him.
Yeah, so this one, uh, Kevin and I, we've, we've. Fortunately enough, uh, had to have this conversation, uh. Because we've seen in the past few years, um, even with, uh, materials costs being as high as they were, the people that wanted to buy homes, um. And build homes. Built very nice homes. Um, and so the standard eight foot story height is sometimes a wash. And so what happens when you look at just. If you look at simply in, in, uh, in an R three district, uh, two stories, currently we have it listed as two stories or thirty feet. And so Kevin and I kind of had a conversation because we have scenarios now where what happens with that total vertical height? Because if somebody wants to build their ground level at twelve foot ceilings. And potentially ten foot on the second story or ten foot and eight, you eat up that, that vertical height really fast. And so are we going to be in the business as a township, especially when they have. An atypical size home where you have a width that is a lot larger and the scale. Defeats the overall height really quick, especially if they wanted to use, uh, anything. Greater than a two twelve inch. And so if, if a story is a story, leave it as a story. As soon as you put a, a vertical, a, a linear distance to it. You, you have. Scenarios that. Are not very friendly to new construction. Uh, and so that's where, kind of keep it as simple as possible. Uh, Kevin and I looked and started talking about. The potential of exploring and defining it by the top sill plate. And then that kind of got muddied after a couple more like what ifs. Um, and so between the two of us, it was the easiest way to clarify this is just define it simply as stories. And those stories are defined as living quarter stories. That way you don't have an aggressive, uh, a roof pitch. Defeating a vertical height. Uh, we have a scenario, or we've had several. Uh, we have a scenario, or we've had several. And these are larger scale homes, twenty three south, uh, the newer home on Red on the Water. Gorgeous, one point two million dollar home. It, one, it never came to this commission. And so that is what it is, but why would we as a as a municipality want to potentially hamper um, larger development and people that want to spend quality money on building a home? Um, and so that way, this is kind of what we just led to. Let's just keep it the KISS methodology. Just keep it simple because two stories is two stories and a story in terms of Michigan building code is living structure space. So unless they have living space in a an architecturally designed trust system, then that would actually have to be still come before you. Uh, because that could be considered a story. But now we can actually move forward with just saying, in these districts, it's two stories. Because you you eat up linear feet real quick when you start talking about homes that are putting in ten twelve foot base level stories. So unless we want to have a whole bunch of Frank Lloyd Wright, and I love his work, except for flat roofs don't work in northern Michigan. Um, so how do you get away with it? Allow it just as stories. That way, if you look at a twelve twelve pitch, toots, a single story home could have the potential depending on its its width to defeat thirty vertical feet. So I just keeping it simple. Why should a roof pitch make a determination of special use or not? Simple as that.
What I'm I'm curious as as I'm thinking of what you said about living, you know, living space. So obviously an attic and a basement aren't going to count as those stories, but what about like a walkout basement? Uh, yeah, I couldn't hear that.
Main level is what we describe as your first floor and then your second. So if you had like a third floor bonus room and built your trusses, that would be a special use then, because then you're not just using it as attic space.
Who polices that? If they're if they're living in at you?
Yeah.
Okay.
When they bring a blueprints to us.
Uh huh.
So they bring it in, you know, X and X and X. Well, you're gonna have attic stuff there. What are you doing? Okay, the bonus room area.
To store.
Everything's just storage.
Is it finished or?
It's impossible.
Then then you get to put in all the rest of the stuff that goes along with it.
Okay, so the the actual language for the two stories versus the um, feet. Is that part of the except as indicated in subset subsection D one A? Because that's that's not clearly laid out here unless I'm just not seeing it.
And V one A on on in terms of Denise's.
Denise's amendments. On bottom of page six. Yeah. It's it's just not stating in there that it's two stories or or am I just?
No, that so that's a that's a different issue. Yeah, that's that's not the height thing. That's a.
Yeah, yeah. So 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 V one A.
Good thing I don't drink anymore too. I would have stood there. Yeah, so that's that's a whole, that's then the next section.
Okay.
That's in terms of property splits and that was worked on between Denise Allenberg, our assessor. Uh, the Land Division Act of nineteen ninety seven, which is pretty sweet read. Um, and so that was the 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 best best way forward there. So but to the so vertical height, it's just, let's just call it, let's keep it simple, stories. And if we want to, yeah.
I I'm just, I just want to make sure we cover everything. So if somebody has an attic and they want to turn it into living space and it's, you know, with would that become a third story? And then what's the approval process? Would it would it then come before planning commission if they wanted to have now a third story? Because now they're going to do living space. Let's say later on, you know, they're going to convert it. I mean, is there some mechanism that can do that?
Then that would be a special use.
Yeah.
Because at that height with that story up there, they may also have to add a fire suppression system to it.
Okay, I just want to have some mechanism written in, make it clear. You know, if this is what they're they want to do, then there has to be some way, some, what's the approval process to do that? So, okay, I mean, so I'm gonna be tweaking this. So is everybody in agreement that that going to stories is is what we're doing?
I am.
Yes. So all of these, all the way through page, boo, da 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 da, all the way through page six. Well, end of page five, really. Well, no, page six is just taking care of all that, the childcare one and then the story. So that's that's what that is. Um, on page six, underneath in that that colorful table. I did add wireless communications facility, the ground mounted, okay? Um, I need to know from you all what districts, so remember it's the things that look like giant doorknobs. What districts would those be allowed in? Right? Right now you have a support structures pretty much wherever.
Well, right now, especially when you get into wireless, uh, what we have here is our pedestal, our water towers. Oh, this is not used technical term. So a lot of our antennas are, we actually lease space. And so, but that being said, that's this could be.
The way of the future.
This is, yeah, because not every community has water towers and especially when you look at steel cost. Uh, the construction for a thousand linear vertical foot self foot tower was roughly four hundred thousand dollars without land cost. Is roughly now just materials, uh, half a million dollars. So they don't want to put more money into going vertical when they don't have it with the technology. Um, so I guess, yeah, back to you Denise's, which zones do we even want it?
Yeah, I mean, th- these things are gonna, you're gonna see them start popping up everywhere when the village of Hillman was having their fight with SpaceX. You know, they had a look at like where these were planned and they're planned all over the place. So we need to be ready for them. So I don't know. I mean, obviously, probably in your what industrial for sure. Um, or manufacturing, um, what does everybody else think? And I would put them as a special use also.
You mean a facility like Hillman?
Yeah.
How tall are those? I really couldn't get a judgment. How tall is that fence?
I actually don't know.
It's either six or.
I was gonna say it looks like an eight foot fence or six foot fence and that thing's just nippeling over it a little bit.
You sure? Could be eight foot. The way it's, no, the way it looks to me, the fence.
Yeah, I mean, it could six or eight foot. I don't think it's.
Would that sort of matter? Would that sort of matter on how far these uh, where those communicators can reach, you know? How far, how powerful are they, you know? Um, if they don't go very far, then they would probably need to become closer to residential areas. If they're super powerful and we can put them way out in the middle of nowhere, then that's probably where we should. Would it would it matter how far they can reach, I guess?
Well, SpaceX is looking at Hillman. I mean, that's what's good kind of, the the that headline is blowing my mind more than anything.
Already there.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That's what's blowing my mind, but in that place in Hillman there. I mean, that looked like an agricultural area because if you look deep in the background, that was that was.
That's so that one, I don't, that's not, they're actually in the village.
Yeah.
So that was what they look like.
Oh.
In Hillman, they are right in the village next to residences.
So that's not the one that's actually.
But it looks exactly, it looks exactly like that.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
No, I guess my question to this technology is, are there a a harmful?
Race.
Is somebody going to become Hulk?
So that's. I guess there's a health department involved in something like that.
That's what got everybody riled up in Hillman when they went up is that when they started putting the signs up that said warning radiation, you know, stay back. That's when all the residences next door got really upset. And then, of course, you know, Village Hillman started doing some research and talking to, you know, the FCC and everything and the 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 radiation. It goes straight up. This is what they say. However, they do recommend a hundred and seventy five foot buffer between residences. Between, so we added in everybody's ordinance, we added Hillman's and Hillman Township and stuff. We put in a hundred and seventy five foot buffer from the property line, not from the residence. So they do recommend a buffer. So there's a reason for that.
So with that being said, I mean, obviously manufacturing, what in this table is a zone that we should never allow? I to me, the
Waterfront.
The two right off the top are are one and waterfront.
Yep. I'm I'm not opposed to any residential be because, well, I guess here's my other thing. Are those are those kind of like? Does it improve your cell quality? Can I buy one of those and put it in my yard so that I never go out of? I never lose internet? I mean, I guess, or wireless?
I mean, they are providing to people there. I think they use satellites. So that's what's going on. They're going, they're they're bouncing things off.
Bouncing off, okay. Because I'm just thinking like, are we going to get a bunch of special use permits from people who live, you know, over here that want to put one in their yard so that they never, you know, they can work from home?
No.
Yeah. Yeah, so. Our waterfront and R one are absolutely a no go.
Yeah, and I would assume so too. We have our largest land mass is comprised of forest wreck and conservation. Is that something that we give consideration to? Uh, that which actually, as I just mentioned that Denise, one thing that I did not add to the list is with forest wreck. Um, we have on Hamilton Road, we have, it's listed as forest wreck, but it's on a principal commercial thoroughfare. I think the the planning commission should give some consideration to an amendment allowing a greater array of commercial activity potential in forest wreck. Because right now there's almost no commercial activity allowed on forest wreck.
Give me an example of what commercial activity would need to be on forest wreck.
Oh, it's.
Oh, well, we have a gentleman in all kinds of.
Okay.
Buy a parcel of land.
Put up a sixty by a hundred foot building. And also has some outdoor storage for his dump trailers and other trailers that he wouldn't keep inside. Now he wants to put up a fence, keep it clean. He can't do it. We don't allow. Yep. Yeah, I mean, we can mine forest wreck and cut the trees and then raise some animals.
Yeah, this, did you say mine forest wreck?
Yep, you can mine forest wreck. Yep, permitted.
What would we mine it for?
Rocks.
Did you say rats?
Rocks.
Oh, rocks. I thought you said rats. I was like, hmm, I don't think we have to do any mining with that, but. Taking away the chickens.
Someone's got to keep the ticks down.
Okay.
So I'm. I was just gonna ask why the whole conditional rezoning thing isn't being used more in forest wreck?
Yeah, well, it's, i- it would be, in this instance, a lot of the activity that we've seen and actually had to hamper is right on basically our municipal boundary with the city on on Hamilton. And so it's one of those zoning scenarios where on the opposite side of the road, there's a lot of flexibility. And then you get into the opposite side sixty six linear feet through the the right of way. And literally, um, yeah, commer- conditional rezone, um, I'm working on one case right now that will probably eventually come before you on French Road, uh, in that scenario. And that was per our conversation Denise, that was actually very palatable to those entrepreneurs. Um, but it's it's there again. It's another one of those. How do we have a symbiotic zoning that gives consideration to what are a budding municipality has? Um, in this instance, it's a truck route. It's a primary road. Uh, and outside of just, I think it's just storage. That is allowed. Yeah, so so I guess that 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 kind of says maybe that is a downstream consideration when we get into the full revamp of not only our master, but we can look at that map and future land use map and say, where did we fall short? And I think that's one of the things that you guys should kind of just keep on the back burner. Um, but for tonight's purpose, I just got, it kind of popped up into my head under forest wreck and that that vision. So, um, back to what is special use for?
Wireless communications ground mounted.
Yeah, I I like the term, what was the term, the the home? Home base.
Earth station.
Earth station. I love that. So.
That's what they call them. That's what, that's what they call it, earth station.
Ground control to major town.
Giddy up Ziggy. Some stardust on this.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, so back to you guys. I mean, where, I mean, so you say that there's already the recommendation of of buffers to property lines of at least a hundred and seventy five linear feet, which basically takes it out of almost well, takes it out of completely out of waterfront residential and R one. It may take it completely out of R two, given some of the the lot particulars. But that's that threshold. So what does it, I mean, it's always going to be a special use. Um, what zones?
I'm just looking to see what R two is.
You want me to take it down off the wall?
No, I can see from here around about.
I mean, we have a fair amount of R R two and R three. And I mean, so I'm not, I'm not opposed of it because I don't know what the buffering capacity is. And so as long as it you have a strengthening mechanism, it can be towards the, that might not work out. But if you have everything aligned, you're gonna weed out some of that, so. I mean, is it, is it, we have a grand total, I think of like seven parcels and office space. Um, is that an allowable by special use? It may be, but the way we currently are zone, if there's a buffer, depending on what that that vertical, that linear feet is, it might just wipe OS, right?
I'm thinking about the OS that that I have.
Yeah.
There's not enough space there. So that would, I mean, the special use isn't even going to be applicable to that.
And and currently all the remaining office space outside of that parcel and one other are already developed. And I don't foresee those.
Develop that one, please.
I'd love to.
Yeah, me too.
Um.
I don't think it's necessary to put it in office space.
Yeah. So then, I mean, is it special use in every category other than waterfront residential and R one? Given whatever the the language and the spacing recommendations are going to be.
What, can you remind me what FR is? That's forest rack, right?
Yeah.
And then ag and then business one office space.
Or you just keep it in your business districts.
Uh, that's. I mean, again, but then I'm looking at it going. Look at how cell towers and antennas came so popular to put in residential. So is it, would it behoove us, is the market there to do special use in R two and everything else? I'm almost feeling like we have to leave it open. And I mean, like we said, with the office space, it eliminates its own problem. It's, I mean, it's there, but it's not right now an issue. Go ahead, Nora.
Make it special use and all of them are most of them. All it's doing is bringing it to this board. So we can talk about it more and bring it to the light and maybe then it can be rejected or approved.
And and I'm not going to say never. I think what we have right now until SpaceX really looks at projects in Opina uh, is a very high level of complacency. Uh, I've just reworked one other contract with T-Mobile, uh, redid AT&T, uh, but hop into Verizon. And those are the three large providers. And they're already affixed to two of the three of our water towers. So are they gonna look to lose vertical height and put a a new technology on the ground? Probably not, but there could be.
But they might need it eventually.
Mr. Musk might come in and say, hey, I'm I'm gonna.
He's, that's gonna go on. He's gonna need to pay Twitter.
He only wanted the platform. He didn't want the people. So.
Also, what about ham radio antennas? The next thing you go stick a wire in the air sometimes.
Well, we do have, I know that we have on Worth Road, uh, one operator. But his vertical heights of his antenna, uh, it doesn't, it's 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 a non-issue. But that's the only ham radio and. It's 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 a non-issue, but that's the only ham radio and uh the only reason I know that he's a ham radio is because he's he's got a license plate that says I'm a ham radio operator, um and he had a water break when I work in DVW, so we got to talk about that, but.
And those things are under federal law exempt from. Our zoning uh requirements, technically, they fall under what's called the OTAR rule. So you have to allow them. You have to allow them to a height that they need to be in order to get a signal.
What is ham radio? Oh.
CBs.
Got it.
It's a higher.
Higher frequency.
So I mean, there again. So looking at this this table. Are are you talking about, should you, is an R two out of the picture as special or is it leave it as special use?
I'd say leave it as special use.
So you're saying the only thing that every other zone other than waterfront residential and R one. Beautiful.
Yeah, and then like Norm said, it'll come to us anyway, so we can discuss it at that time. And. Isn't everything else two hundred feet? For like, I know with our marijuana um licensing, it was two hundred feet from.
Five hundred.
Oh, it's five hundred, never mind, okay.
Five hundred.
It was. Never mind, I was just thinking, can we uniform it across the board?
Yeah, because we had to root come back uh under special use for an individual that was looking to open a daycare because he was uh within that five hundred.
Right.
Vertical feet, so it's an inverse special use, allowing him to be. Second in line, which. Meanwhile, I won't even open the door.
Well, neither will that shop.
I've actually reached out.
Yeah.
And I haven't heard anything back from Mr. BB.
Uh, there is work going on though at that proposed daycare center.
Yeah, they painted it.
They painted it. So I noticed anything that gets down nice on the south end. They painted the outside of the building.
Yeah, so that's, I think that kind of wraps that up. Back to you Denise.
Now, so now we're down to on the bottom of page six, this creation of a non-conforming lot. This has actually come up in a couple of different communities. Where people have applied for lot splits with the intention of. Adding, you know, splitting off a a a sliver basically that doesn't meet. Standards in the zoning and then. Selling it, combining it to the adjacent lot, and I think that's what we're talking about here. This has come up in another community, but sometimes that doesn't. Sometimes you can do a boundary adjustment, but sometimes that doesn't have that, they 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 split it off, they sell it, and it doesn't happen instantly. This happened in another, one of the other townships down in Elkhona County where. They wanted to split it off, but they knew it was gonna be like a whole year before they could sell it and attach it to the other parcel. So in that year, we have like, okay, we've just created a non-conforming lot, so what do we do? How do we, there's gotta be some kind of mechanism. Because we want that to happen, because that's gonna happen, where we want to sell a little bit to our neighbors, but it's just, if you technically go by the ordinance, like, well, you can't do that. So. I think, and and maybe Nathan, I don't know if you have any more to add to that, but.
No, no, it's a, it's running rampant, it's it's about as popular in the charter township as Rooster's. We, we recently, this past year, were under the the first year of a sequence year, five-year sequence of a contract with Alan Burke. Um, and so there again, another learning curve. What we knew was normal in assessing practices, um. Didn't meet the mark. Even potentially legally meet the mark of land division. Um, and so now we have uh somebody that's doing it uh with an amazing level of knowledge. And I've learned more uh in the few months working with him about zoning. Um, and it's really ruffled a lot of feathers of surveyors, uh property owners, uh because and more more so even uh reliters. Um, because they were used to coming in. It would get a rubber stamp and out the door and. Like Denise said, to do it right can take up to a year. To file it. And we're now cleaning up decades of splits. Um, now the inherent problem and complexity becomes especially if that's a split in a special assessment district. How do those dollars get split as well? So in this instance, I I spoke with Denise because of that exactly. The case is Dow Drive, uh we have a R one residence that meets all standards. He wanted to buy a sliver of land from the adjoining property owner, which happened to be the city golf court, of course. Um, and so. It became the only way to actually push this through after uh. Too much time was a a lot line adjustment. Or a boundary adjustment. Um, and that was quasi, and so that's why I put Denise in touch with Alan Berg. Because we don't wanna curb people. Because he has to look at it extremely black and white. Our standard is hundred foot wide, depth can't be four times the width. Um, and so that process is null and void when you have something less than. What's allowed in an R one, which is twenty thousand square foot, et cetera, et cetera, for for lots standards. Um. So this was, once again, you you don't know it's a problem until you have to deal with it. Um, and this took, I think, four months to deal with. On this instance, and so I don't see it. Being a township priority impeding that process, we just need to clarify it a little bit better. So.
Yeah, so this. This just gives a. Uh, one little paragraph that says, yeah, you can split that off and it will be non-conforming. But you can't, you know, when you're creating a non-conforming lot like that, like with the intention of combining it with an adjacent parcel, you can't develop it in that until that. Until that combination, until that's joined, till that combination is done. So.
So once that's done though, so let's say I have this non-conforming lot do, and I wanna develop it, do I need a special use?
No, so you can't develop it until it gets joined to another lot, and then all it's doing is making that lot bigger.
Got it, okay.
I mean, that lot itself may be non-conforming. And you've added a little piece to it, and it's still non-conforming, but it's a little more conforming, and you can still develop a non-conforming lot. It just makes so it it's, there's really no harm in letting people do that.
Just a little, cool. Thank you.
That's how that one came to be, is we have lot structure standards and it didn't jive with the land division of act in nineteen ninety-seven. And so by adding this paragraph, it it kind of. Nullifies that concern. You you can do it. Uh, Alan may not be a thousand percent on board, but now he at least knows our zoning says that it can happen, and then it makes it faster on his end.
Okay.
So this will give a proper response to the people trying to improve their.
Okay, so then we're on page seven, so back to my solar stuff that I was talking about. So this is your section seven thirty-two, your solar energy, these are your uh utility scale facilities, so. What I did is I took everything that I learned this summer from the training and then also from the site visit. And I in 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 recommended language that the trainers provided us, okay? So screening, I thought, after seeing the screening at the facility in Chihuahua City County, I said, all right. We need to make sure that screening is screened year round. And that it's screening at the time of installation, so they're not installing, you know, four foot high evergreens, twelve feet apart. That are then gonna die. Okay, so they need, it needs to be screened fully from view at the time of installation and then maintain through the life of the facility. Replacing dead vegetation, you know, within six months or earliest feasible time, depending on the weather. Um, I'll tell you right now, the solar guys don't like that. Okay, they don't like that section and but that's okay, because you need to protect the neighbor's property value also. So, um. Then I added on setbacks, you got a fifty-foot setback, but I said I added on of non-participating lots. Because you want it to be at the edge fifty foot from the edge of the facility. And then wiring, um, you're gonna have wiring above ground, this says you can bury it underground, but you're gonna, but it can also be above ground. You've got wiring between the rows of panels, that's just gonna happen. But at least you don't want it above the height of the solar arrays at the maximum tilt, so. I added that in, I added lighting, really the only lighting in the facility is gonna be in the inverter substation location. Um, and then downlit lighting, so you, we didn't have any lighting standards in there at all. So I wanted to add that, um, sound standards. Now, you solar panels are silent, right, but the inverter is not silent. It is very loud, um usually it's in the interior of the property. Um, the one I went to, you know, you couldn't, when you were standing at the solar panels, you couldn't hear it. But when we walked up the road and got close to that thing, I mean, it was loud. So just like with the wind turbines, we wanna have a decibel, you know, at the uh at the non- non-participating lot property line that they can't go over, so they're not like installing that thing right next to the non-participating lots. That just forces them to put it in the interior. We're having this argument with another town or with a solar. Uh, solar company in another township right now, cause they don't like that either, cause. You know. They don't like regulations, um, land, land clearing, this is, you know, land clearing and disturbance as minimal as possible. Um, you know, topsoil retained on site, access drive, I'm I'm summarizing, I mean, you guys can read through this. Designed to minimize the soil disturbance, water runoff and soil compaction. Uh, fencing, you know, they have to have fencing. This is saying that fencing is not subject to the setbacks that the solar panels are, because you want the fencing to be right at the edge of the property. Okay, you don't, the the farther you put the fencing in, you know, the farther the solar panels have to be in. Um, that might actually mean the bigger piece of property they're gonna have to look for, because they need the space. And then if there's battery storage area, they need to show that on the site plan. Um, lot coverage, so their solar panels shouldn't be counting toward the lot coverage standards that you have in the ordinance, the, you know, the the impervious surface, that would be really, well. You you you'd never meet it on with the with the uh with these facilities, but also it's impossible to calculate, you know, they're they're constantly tilting. So how do you calculate what the lot coverage is different at all times of day? And then, and I, you don't have to keep this, but a lot of communities are asking for some language on agricultural protection. Um, one of the things that came out very, very quickly in this training. Because this, this is the question that most townships are asking, is that what what are, you know, because the the scale that that Michigan is planning for these facilities, I mean, it's large, okay, when you look at the where the planned facilities are. Um, they're all over the state of Michigan, there's even one uh township in Calhoun County. Where, you know, it's a township with thirty-six sections and thirty-five of their thirty-six sections are gonna have solar panels. I mean, that's, that's a massive change to a township. So, you know, the question, the first question that townships usually ask, or you know, what's especially agricultural townships, is what's this gonna do to our agricultural land? I mean, what are agricultural production? And so the answer is truly, they say. We don't know, we haven't done that study yet. So they're they're moving forward with this and they're and they're. You know, the farmland gets taken out of production for it's, you know, usually thirty or forty years. When they, when they put one of these facilities on, these are thirty, thirty and forty year leases. They're looking on average for fifteen hundred acres per solar farm. Okay, so. This is big, so so the whole idea of, you know, what's wh- where is the agricultural production gonna happen if we cover up all of our ag land with solar panels? I mean, that's the big question that nobody really knows. They're looking at that now, like University of Michigan is doing a study right now. Trying to determine. What what's gonna be the impact on agriculture, because it's gonna be a negative impact, we know that for sure. Um, so this section just talks about, you know, how to minimize. Impact on ag land. I've got one, you can also do, y- you guys don't have this, but. One of the townships in Alpena County is looking at, um, they've proposed a solar overlay district, because they're trying to keep. They know they're gonna get solar. Um, cause they're right along M thirty-two, they know they're gonna get it. But they're gonna try and limit it to their. Their non-prime agricultural soils. Okay, so they're doing an overlay district that says, all right. Yeah, you can do it here and we know you want farmland, but you're gonna go into our farmland that, you know, isn't, it hasn't been farmed for a while. So that's what they're doing. Um, this language just talks specifically about, you know, citing panels, if they can cite it along the edges of the farmland. You know, maintaining drainage infrastructure. Avoiding isolating areas of the farm, so you're not splitting up the farm. Um, purchasing egg conservation easements, if the township has a a purchase of development rights ordinance, I don't know if Alpena Township does or not, but if they ever do, you have this language that says, you know. Okay, you're gonna purchase conservation easements elsewhere, if you're gonna, if you're gonna take up ag land. Um, just keep going down that page, repowering, so they can come in and repower it. If they're not changing the footprint, they should be able to just come in and repower it without getting a new special land use, but if they're gonna change the footprint. That's a new special land use. Um, going on to the next page. This has them providing a report, an annual report for how much actual. Uh, you know, solar energy is being produced each year. Um, I added in a section on the you performance guarantee, you're going, if you get an egg, a solar facility, you're going to get you're going to require a performance guarantee for decommissioning that thing. Also, I added in that when they come in, apply for that special use, they're gonna have to give you a decommissioning plan. That says, you know, how it's gonna be decommissioned, what the costs are, um, and then. If you, if you go down to the next page. On page ten, it says that every five years, there's gonna be a review of that performance guarantee. To see if what the, if the costs have gone up, and then they're gonna have to probably deposit more of a performance guarantee if costs have gone up for decommissioning, and then you all approve the decommissioning plan. So. That's a lot of red. What do you wanna talk about?
Can we just outlaw solar?
So that's the thing. That's the biggest question, so no, here, see, this is what's happened. In the zoning enabling act, there's a provision that says that you can't prohibit. A legitimate land use where there's a demand for that land use, okay? So that's called exclusionary zoning, if you if you try and prohibit a land use that is in demand. Well, what's happened is is really the state of Michigan has created the demand for the solar by 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 putting a percentage on. You know, how much uh energy is gonna be produced by renewables, so that's, they've created that demand, it. It it might be a false demand, but that's what's there, so. The utility companies are saying, well, we have to get to this certain percent by a certain year, so there's a huge demand, so we're gonna plow forward. So we've been, so I've I've checked with some attorneys. Um, and yeah, we we can't prohibit it. So that's why it's really important to have some really good standards in your ordinance. Um, to try and control it, so you don't end up like a, you know, a a Sheridan Township in Calhoun County where, you know, all of your sections have, or just about all your sections have solar farms. Um, it's really. It's it's starting to be a big fight in certain townships between the property owners that are having the leases and the property owners that that aren't having the leases that don't wanna live next to that, okay? I just talked today with one where you've got. People upset because it's changing their whole landscape. And then the other people say, but. We're getting like thousand dollars an acre for, you know, so we're per year, so you know, we're, they're, they're getting a lot of money, so there's this. There's this fight right now. Um, just be ready for it, and that's why we're doing this training on January eleventh. Because I think there's a lot that people need to understand. I will say this too. I predict that. State of Michigan's gonna come along and do just like what they did with mining. And say, oh, sorry townships, you you don't have the ability to regulate solar anymore. I'm just throwing that out there. I don't know for sure that's gonna happen, but. I just have a feeling that's gonna happen. Sorry to be a downer. No kidding.
The UP is gonna get screwed. Yep.
Yeah, so I would recommend. I tried to make, you know, as comprehensive language as possible, so. I would recommend putting it all in there, because at least it gives you. More to go on than what's in your ordinance right now.
Correct, I agree with you. Cause again, all these are coming to us.
Yes, so it's gonna be really important, you know, if a solar facility, when you get to the point where somebody actually applies. This is where these findings of fact. Are gonna be extremely critical, because if you're going to deny one. Be ready to go to court, because they're gonna take it to court for sure. And we need to have your findings of fact. Rock solid, not just, oh, it meets the standards or it doesn't meet the standard, uh-uh. Here's your ten reasons why it doesn't meet the standard, here's your fifteen reasons why it doesn't meet this one, so. Just know going in that, you know. Is this one's gonna be, it'll be difficult.
Can't wait for that first one to come across, and we have another call like this Denise.
Yeah.
Trust me.
Yeah. This is, this is, it's, so it's gonna be hap, like I said, it's going on all over the state right now, and and some of your neighbors are already in in battles, so. Um, I know it's coming there, so.
That Wilson?
Uh, Green, Green Township is the one that's.
Green.
Pro, they're being proactive in terms of, when they did their, um, when Green Township did their master plan, they put some really strict really, really good goals in there. good goals in there about agricultural preservation. And that is now working in their benefit, because they can cite all those goals of what they said about how they want to preserve the agriculture in their community, and that's like their number one thing.
Yeah.
You've put those goals in their zoning ordinance, or we're, we're in the process of doing that to say here's the basis for why restricting the solar to this particular district or this particular overlay within a district.
Got it.
So they're being proactive, but you've got other communities that are unfortunately, re- re- having to react, like in the one I talked to in Elkhona County today, because the power company is there already signing leases with people, and they haven't even addressed it in their zoning ordinance yet. And they're already signing leases. So I mean, they're having to react, because now you have people saying, wow, this is a lot of money we're getting. And then you have other people saying, but this is going to change our whole township. Okay. After that happiness, now let's go on to accessory use panels. Now, these are just people that want to put a panel on their house or something to, you know, to be more self-sufficient. So this is a lot easier. I did add in, you already had standards in there, but I added in that there needs to be, I mean, obviously, they need a zoning permit, or I know you don't do zoning permits, they need a per- permit. Um, but they need to submit a plot plan, because you need to see where those things are going. Now, this is zoning administrator approval, so this isn't going to come to you guys, but there needs to be some kind of plot plan, and I just wrote in there what they need to have on it. So most places are saying if it's going to be up on your building, you know, to allow a little bit above the roof, although you just changed the story, so you don't need this feet thing. I, so so ones that regulate by feet, you usually need to say, but actually, we don't need this anymore, because you're changing the stories. So don't worry about how many feet is above your highest point. Um, also, when you're measuring for ground-mounted ones, when you're measuring from setbacks, you're gonna do that at minimum tilt, okay? That's where you, you gotta be at minimum tilt to know, so it's most horizontal. So you're measuring setbacks that way. And then it also, I wrote in a section that if because it's going by your accessory building standards, but let's say they want to put up a ground mounted panel and there's absolutely no sunlight that they can get where the ordinance allows, this allows them to come to planning commission and get an exception for where they put it. And then, um, non-conformity, so if they want to put a panel on a non-conforming building or something, putting a panel on a non-conforming building shouldn't be con- considered an expansion of a non-conformity, because I mean, you want people to put solar panels up, because that just helps them. So, um, typically you'll say, no, they don't have to get special approval for a expansion of a non-conformity, just to do a solar panel. And then the building integrated ones, because it's right in the roof tiles, it's right in, you know, in the windows, they don't they don't have to meet these same standards. So that's what number six says. Um, any questions on that one? Nope. All right, then, very quickly with wind turbines, I just quickly reviewed your wind turbine section because of some of the things that I learned. One of the things is probably the biggest impact, you know, of wind turbines is the night lighting, right? You've got the red blinking lights. I hate those things. I drive up 127 all the time at night, late at night. I hate the red blinking lights. They put me to sleep. It's awful. So now they've developed technology where they actually have a radar activated lighting system, where you don't have to have those red blinking lights. So it, they don't come on until something comes into them. None of them around here have those yet. But the technology exists. Okay, so you can put it in your ordinance that you want that. If that technology is available, that's what they need. If they, if somebody puts a wind turbine up, now these are the utility scale ones. They need to be using that technology, so you don't end up with red lights all over Alpena Township. Um, then I also, so I'm mimicking the solar, solar section. You need to have a decommissioning plan also for wind turbines. Now, they should be, they should be putting that in there, that when they're applying that you, they should have a decommissioning plan. And then performance guarantee, it says the same thing, same thing as a solar abandonment um, of these wind turbines, it's the same exact language as your solar language. So then I kind of did a little bit of the same thing with wireless. You know, these are three things that are very similar. But first, on the bottom of page 12, I added, this is where I added the ground mounted facilities all through the wireless section. So I also um, replace, I tried to replace the word tower where we're really not talking about just a tower, we're talking about a facility that could be these ground mounted ones. Um, if you go down to the bottom of page 13, that's where you start seeing me replace the word tower with wireless communication facility. If you go, so that's most of what's on page 14. Then at the bottom of page 14 is where the setbacks are. Okay, so um, on towers, I noticed there was an at least, needed to say at least equal to the height of the tower. The setback shouldn't be the height of the tower, because at least they could set it back farther, so we needed to add that. And then for the ground mounted facilities, I added that 175 foot from the outside of the equipment enclosure to each property line. Um, and then um, going on to the next page. Page 15, you know, at least six feet fencing. Also radar activated obstruction lighting, if you need, you know, if that technology is available. And then um, I added on the ba- bottom of page 15 and 16, there's that decommissioning plan, exact same thing, performance guarantee removal of abandon. Just repeating the same thing for each of those. Oh, and that's it. Wow, I'm done.
Wow, that was thrilling, Denise.
I know. So I'll make those changes that, you know, we talked about, and if you have any other changes that you want to talk about, or if you want to, you know, if you have an afterthought after the meeting or something. Anybody can feel free to email me. If everything looks good with those little tweaks we made, you guys could set a public hearing date if you want.
And I believe we're going to do the public hearing date for our next meeting, correct? December 12th? If you guys, what do you think? On the changes, correct? You think that's enough time? Okay. Yeah. Do you send it to Lynn? Do you send it to Lynn for the public hearing? Okay.
Yep.
Yep. Um, I mean, it's modernizing our zoning more than anything, and that's what's necessary. So if 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 it's just in little doses, then that's what we'll take it.
Yep. Sounds good.
Correct. Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Later.
See ya. Have a good night.
Yep, you too.
Um, yeah.